All right, I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Planning Commission to order the meeting for October 12, 2023. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Ms. Greer, are there any changes to today's agenda?
No changes.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Schenk, anything from the County Attorney's Office?
No changes.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we're going to go on to the first item, which is minutes for approval, September 14, 2023. So if the Commissioners have had a chance to review them, if you have any corrections, clarifications, if not-
The movement is to be approved as submitted.
We have a motion by Mr. Bedford. Is there any discussion? All right, we'll open up for a second. Anybody wish to second? Okay, Mr. DeLezline seconded. If you would, please go ahead and vote.
I cannot.
All right, since Mr. Yes, since Mr. Bedford's having technical issues-
Wait, 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 I'm not having technical issues.
There's a ghost on his computer doing stuff, yeah.
It's having technical issues.
We'll go ahead and just call a real quick voice vote. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Sure votes, aye. Motion passes six zero with Mr. Roth being absent. All right, we're going to move on to presentations upon request. I'm sorry, citizen comment. So this is an opportunity for anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on anything that is not on today's agenda, a future item. So when you hear the item, if you want to speak on an item, when you hear it, you can come up and speak, you know, specifically to that item. But is there anybody who wishes to make a comment or statement regarding things that are not on today's agenda? All right, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close the citizen comment portion of the hearing. We're going to move on to the first item. And the first couple items are going to be presentations upon request. And what this means is it's a general, generally a very clear process. Not a lot of questions are expected on it. So what we'll do is we'll ask that the item be introduced, and then we'll open it up for comments, public comments, and then we'll address any specific items that come from that. So the first item that we have is PDR 237D-17 Perrin Z Perrin P, the Mitchell at Palmetto. Ms. Greer, can you please read that item into the record?
Yes, PDR 2317 ZP, the Mitchell at Palmetto. It's OHM, Tirth Investment and Consulting LLC is the owner. And Loretta Merrill is here for staff if needed. It's a rezone of approximately 9.16 acres, generally located between Bay Shore Road, 89th Street East, and US 41 North, and commonly known as 9025 US 41 North, Palmetto. From PDC to the PDR zoning district, approving a preliminary site plan for 183-unit multifamily project with at least 25% of the units designated as affordable housing, subject to stipulations as conditions of approval.
Very good, thank you. And this item is quasi-judicial, which means we need folks to be sworn. But that being said, if you intend to speak on any item today, if you would, please rise to be sworn in. Very good, thank you. Who do we have for the applicant? Good morning, Mr. Grimes.
Good morning.
If you could, just briefly introduce the application, then we'll open it up for public comment.
I will do so. I am, excuse me, I'm Caleb Grimes with Grimes Galvano. I'm a resident of Manatee County, and I have been sworn. This particular project is pretty straightforward. It is located between I-275 and the port, and it very conducive to having a affordable housing project. And we're putting it here. The current zoning is planned development commercial. It's in a rez nine category at a commercial intersection, 89th and Bay Shore Road and US 41. And we're here to bring an affordable housing project to the site, and they're asking to rezone it from PDC to PDR.
Very good, thank you. And this is a project that is taking advantage of the manatee, manatees, livable manatee.
Manatee County, it's not the live local law of the state. It is, Manatee County has a provision that if you do affordable housing, you can have some increased density in the particular classification. And the folks here, I have Mr. Stephen Guash with me with defined development, do these. They're very active in providing for affordable workplace housing. They think it's very needed, and they've, this is their third project here in Manatee County, and that's what we're looking forward to doing. This site is particularly conducive to it.
Very good, thank you. All right, any questions for the applicant? Mr. DeLezline?
If, are you allowed to build this in the current zoning? What could you build?
The current zoning is planned development commercial. And so the residential use such as this doesn't, doesn't work for that, which is why we're changing it to planned development residential. And by doing planned development, of course, you get to see the project, you get to see the outline. We've brought a preliminary site plan with it, and you can see exactly what's going. I will say that you just mentioned live local law, the state law, would actually allow this. It could be done in a, in a sense, but you would need to have more affordable housing without even going through zoning. So, and it would actually allow a lot more units to be allowed. But what we're trying to do is the 183 units with the 25%.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this application, please do so. Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing, open it up to the commission. Are there any, is there any additional information needed? All right, with that, we'll, we'll close the public hearing, and the Chair will consider a motion. So if you would, please do it. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Rutledge, a second by Ms. Kiba. If you would, please go ahead and vote. All right, we have a, the vote is six zero for approval, again with Mr. Roth being absent. So thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we're going to go to the next item on the agenda, item number two, PDC-13-30 Perrin P Perrin R2. Ms. Greer, can you please read that into the record?
Yes, sir. PDC 1330 PR2 Gershoni Out Parcel. Laura Gonzalez is here to represent staff, approving an amended preliminary site plan to allow the construction of an approximately 8,100 square foot restaurant on approximately 1.58 acres zone PDC, generally located on the northeast quadrant of US 301 and I-75, approximately 650 feet west of 60th Avenue East, and commonly known as 5710 20th Street East, Allington.
Very good, thank you. All right, who do we have for the applicant? Good morning, Mr. Mathis. If you could, please just introduce your application, and we'll then open it up for public comment. And if there's anything that comes from those discussions, we'll focus on, on those details. So, good morning.
Great, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. We'll call this Third Time's a Charm, try, try, try again. It's the third time I've appeared in front of the Planning Commission on a small parcel. I have been sworn.
Yep.
Todd Mathis, Benderson Development. Third time I've appeared in front of the Planning Commission on this project. We have PDC zoning, mixed-use, future land use category, all four sort of standalone built-to-suit restaurants. This is an 8,000-foot restaurant on the pad. It's all-you-can-eat breadsticks and salad, one of my favorites. We have two specific approval requests tied to it. One is reducing the, the street buffer from 20 feet to 10 feet, given the significant additional green space we have in the corner of the property, and the other at the west edge of the property, just because of the very strange configuration of this parcel. Otherwise, we own the adjacent parcels, the Ruby Tuesday, the hotel. They share parking and are connected by 20th Court East and 20th Street East.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. We're going to open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing, and we'll open it up for, to the commission. Is there any additional information necessary?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the, the public hearing, and we'll open it up for a motion or deliberation. So what's the, so we have a motion by Ms. Kaba, a second by Mr. Smock. If you would, go ahead and vote. All right, with that, the motion passes six zero. So we're going, we're going to move on to item number three. Item number three, I have a conflict of interest, so I'll have to step off the dais. I'm going to hand over the chairmanship to Mr. Rutledge, and I'll step away.
Okay, first, could we read this into the record, please?
PDPI 1506 ZGR, alum dewatering facility. Manatee County is the owner. It's quasi-judicial. It does state that Rosina Leider is the Planning Section Manager. She's not here today, so we will cover for her. Amending and restating ordinance PDPI 1506 ZG to add 9.93 acres, providing for the rezoning of 9.93 acres on the south portion of 146.83 acre site, 136.9 acres comprised of 123.59 acres of PDPI, 10.6 acres of A, and 2.71 acres of CON zoning districts, located on the south side of Waterline Road in Bradenton. From A to PDPI zoning district, approving a revised general development plan for the entire 146.83 acre site for expansion of the existing water treatment facilities, inclusive of the previously approved uses on the GDP.
Thank you very much. Can I ask if any of the board members have had any expartie communication? And can I ask, I don't know that Bill asked previously, but any of the previous votes that you had made, had you had expartie communication?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Clean house. Introduction by staff. Do you want to introduce it, or was the introduction satisfactory? Please, go ahead. Thanks. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Monae Moore. I'm with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. And so the project that we're proposing today is a rezone again from general agriculture to PDPI, which is public interest, to include this parcel, which is approximately about 10 acres in size, to be included in the previously approved general development plan that was approved in 2015. So approval or recommendation for approval would allow for the expansion of the existing water treatment facility.
Not much controversy?
I hope not.
Any reason we should be concerned about this?
I think what would be concerning if it's not approved, this is the water that's used to serve the residents here within this county. And so it's kind of, I would say, very needed within the county in order to be able to provide for our current population and our projected population.
Well stated, thank you. Questions for the applicant, go ahead.
Just, what will the treatment facility expansion be exactly? Will it be more structures or?
Yes, so what's being proposed now, there's existing structures that's north of Waterline Road. And so what we're proposing is the inclusion of a approximately 10-acre site south of the road, which will include a building that's going to be approximately 25 feet in height, and then some centrifuges that will be able to remove the water from the material that we're currently storing at the site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Commissioners, Sirs?
Yes, sir. As you may have guessed, I've done thousands of general development plans. So you're proposing a general development plan that doesn't show access, doesn't show buffers, doesn't show setbacks, doesn't show landscape buffers or anything?
No, we have a full general-
Is this the new status for general development plans in the county?
No, we have a full general development plan and a landscape plan.
I'm sorry?
We have a full general development plan and a landscape plan.
I'm looking at the general development plan. Did I miss something?
Jen, if you don't mind, can you pull up our presentation?
Okay.
I mean, I'm looking at a four-page general development plan.
Jordan, do you have a copy of it with you?
Sheet title, covered sheet, previous approval of GDP, and sheets three and four of a GDP. And it could be, I've missed something in the GDP, but, I mean, I know when I do GDPs, I have to do a little arrow for access and roads.
While we're waiting, I could, since Rosina's not here, I am aware that staff added stipulation B for this project at time of FSP for viewing expansion of the dewatering use on-site. I think that means this parcel. The applicant will provide landscape screening on the project boundaries, the but the parcel to the east of the triangular parcel, as well as subdivision to the south, Palm Grove. The type and amount of landscape material to be determined by the environmental plan section.
Okay, so-
For that specific thing they're adding, there, Rosina was concerned about landscaping in the future.
So, so I can do that going forward? When I come in with a GDP, I can just use those words and move ahead?
Well, there is no, this, in this zone dish of PDPI, there is no requirement. I mean, someone has to testify on this, but there's no requirement for landscaping in PDPI. I think the staff can verify that.
You're proposing a building. I don't know where the building-
I just wanted to make a comment. I think we're only going to be utilizing the existing accesses to the existing parcels. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we can, and you're right, those arrows should be shown on there. So we'll get those added prior to the, to the board meeting. But we are, they are only proposing the existing accesses that are shown on the plan. There's not an arrow on the plan, but they are shown as access points via the aerial.
And the building setbacks, the building height, I know there's going to be residential to the south. Are you doing anything to buffer this building? What's the height of it? Is there any buffers to the south to the residential property that are being proposed?
Yes, we're proposing buffers for the site or perimeter buffers, but then also there are existing mounds that provide buffers to that site that the residents that surround the area actually prefer. And we have no intent of moving those mounds of what's been kind of dried from, or the material that's been dried and providing a visual buffer to those residents.
Mounds?
Yes.
So, again, going forward, I can do a GDP, show a big pile of dirt, and that's my buffer?
So, no, we're proposing buffers in addition to that. However, we've held two neighborhood workshops, and we've been able to speak with the residents. And so there are mounds that they like that are on the site that provide that visual buffer. But in addition to that, we are meeting our code requirements with the landscaping buffers.
Okay, I'm just not sure that that's sufficient code requirement. This is a GDP. You know, if, if I come in with a GDP, I have to show more than this. I never get away with that.
And I, I did notice that, sorry, when staff did the staff report on page nine, on the original GDP, I don't have staff rewrite everything from way back when, but there was specific approval granted regarding landscape buffers and screening. And it said staff had no objection to those specific approvals at that time, because the facility requires security and screening, will vent visual inspections and security checks that are performed by the Sheriff's Department. And there are a significant number of large diameter ground pipes in the facility, and screening wouldn't interfere with those pipes. So this was looked at way back when, according to the staff report on the initial project.
Okay.
Chairman, for the record, I'd like for Cariconing to comment.
Thanks. Cariconing, Environmental Planning Section Manager, I have been sworn. So I was essentially going to reiterate what Sarah said. This PDPI for the, the water treatment facility has had specific approvals going way back for landscaping.
Sure.
And moving forward, we're allowing those specific approvals to remain. There is a stipulation in place to allow us to review it at time of final site plan.
We can change all that stuff because the GDP's in front of us now. So all those things could be changed. Because I know when you open a GDP, all bets are off, and we're going to talk about everything.
You're not wrong.
That's correct, I'm not wrong.
But there are specific approvals that were already in place that we're allowing to move forward.
So I'm, I'm just trying to establish what I need to do the next time when, when the private developer comes in with a GDP, what level of review and drawings can be expected. And I'm okay with this.
Well, and we'll review it to those standards, just like this is a utility use. There's not specific standards under PDPI, and we review it to the adjacent parcels.
Okay. Should be fun.
Well, I have a question. I think it's a good point. My question is, if, if we approve this, is that's a precedence that from now on, everybody comes in and gives us a minimum? Or are we given special consideration because it's the county making this?
That's what I'm saying.
I, I get it, that I'm-
This is Chair, yes, we are. This is a governmental use and planned above public interest, and it's treated differently than residential subdivisions. It's an industrial use with pipes above ground. There's hazards there. We can't screen them from the Sheriff's Department, security going by. It's treated differently.
Okay, so I mean-
So it's not the same as what Mr. Bedford's describing. It is special.
Okay.
Well, I don't know that. I mean, you have the south side, you have residences-
I think if the counselor tells me that, I believe it.
The south side has residences coming in, and we don't care about those people?
Well, as I stated, the staff added stipulation B on that landscape buffer at FSP. We don't have enough detail here to know where the buffers, you know, the type of details.
Yeah, all right, just as long as I can do that. We don't have enough detail to show you what my buffer's going to be, so we'll do it at FSP.
Well, general plans, only we have to show the use and the access. All they have to show is use and access, and the height, basically.
All right, excellent. Make my life easier.
Any further comments?
No.
No, I have no additional comments at this time.
Okay. Staff, would you like to make further comments about this submission? Anyone? Intriguing. Okay, at this point, then, we'd like to open it up for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stand by. Do we have anybody from the audience that's requested a chance to speak on this item? Would you please step forward? We'll welcome you and invite you to hear your thoughts. If not, then we'll close public comment. And then we'll go to discussion and questions for the staff. Members? Sir? No?
No, I got my answers, thank you.
I'm kind of concerned about that, actually. Okay, so any other further questions? Rebuttal from the submitter?
No, we have a rebuttal up at the top.
Staff, any final comments?
Information on buffering.
Commissioner, would you? No. Okay, all right, we'll close that, and now open it up for the Board's commentary. Very curious about commentary.
So it might be a suggestion.
I, I think the one question I have, and I think I want to ask this before we take our vote, is that if we make this exception for the county as special use and so forth, is that the conduct and standard which we're going to accept for everybody else? And on that basis, I'm just kind of concerned about it. I don't, I don't know that, I think all the questions asked are important, and I don't know that they're all, in my opinion, clearly answered. And so I'm a little concerned about that as a standard and saying, yeah, that's acceptable, because it's the county. And then a private developer comes in and says, well, that's not acceptable for me.
I just want to clarify something. Mr. Bedford said the whole project's open. We can't rescind the previously approved specific approvals that were granted back whenever, was it 1980s? I know when we built this thing.
Right.
They remain in effect.
Any general, Cariconing Environmental Planning Section Managers, so any new general development plans that come in, we review for landscape buffer widths and what are applicable to the project and the adjacent uses. This PDPI goes back very far, had specific approvals already granted, so we can't take it back.
I'm not asking that.
Moving forward, it would be insufficient to come in with no standards tied to landscaping with the GDP. We don't accept that currently.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So the whole idea of a planned development is you do more. You do more. It's excessive. There's a problem with the issue. That's why it's not a straight rezone, and that's why on a planned development, once PDC, PDR, everyone's expected to do more, show more, do more, more buffering, more setbacks, more regulations, more requirements. So what we're saying here is, given this now, not 40 years ago, but this now, we're not going to get more. We're just going to get what we got and have a nice day. Okay, as long as that's good going forward. Thank you.
Well stated. All right, any further comments?
No.
I see we have a motion by Mr. DeLezline and Mr. Smock. Would you please vote? Okay, it does pass. The only dissenting vote is my own, and the absentee of David Roth.
And?
And the now returning Chair.
Mr. Conley abstained from voting due to voting conflict of interest.
Okay, correct.
Very good. All right, we're going to move on to item number four. Again, item number four is a presentation upon request, PDC 2223 Perrin Z Perrin P. Ms. Greer, can you please read this into the record?
Yes, yes, sir. PDC 2223 ZP, storage now parish, storage- Yes, yes, sir. PDC 2223ZP, Storage Now Parish, Storage Now Parish LLC owner. PLN 22080031. It is quasi-judicial, and Laura Gonzalez is here to represent staff. It is, excuse me, amending the official zoning atlas ordinance 1517 relating to the zoning within the unincorporated area, providing for a rezone of approximately 1.48 acres in the village district parish to parish commercial village overlay and 5.13 acres from the village district parish to the plan development commercial zoning district, totaling 6.61 acres retaining the parish commercial village overlay district. On 1.48 acres in the northwest portion of the site, approving a preliminary site plan for up to 137, 550 square feet of mini warehouse uses and 2,945 square feet of office uses for a total of 140, 495 square feet and generally located on the northeast quadrant of US 301 North and County Road 675 Parish, subject to stipulations as conditions of approval.
Very good. Thank you. And who do we have for the applicant? Yes. Good morning. If you could state your name and that you have been sworn in your county of residence.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Lynn Burnett with LTA Engineers, and I do actually need to be sworn.
Oh. All right. If there's anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak, if you would, please rise to be sworn in. Anyone at all? If you don't do it now, if you get up here, you're going to have to be embarrassed.
And berated and...
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I am a resident, and my business office also is in Manatee County.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Just normally, I think staff does a presentation.
Yeah, this, these are presentations upon request. Just briefly introduce your application. We'll open it up for public comment, and if there's any specific issue that comes from those, then we'll focus on that.
Perfect.
Generally, I think staff has presumed that it meets the criteria, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, so this project's basically, historically, was ag use. It has sat vacant for a number of years. There has been a strong interest in the storage facility in this area with the growing communities at large. I will note a couple of things. When the sign went up, there were at least 10 inquiries almost immediately of people looking for storage. In addition, the owner, landowners, were able to secure 14 signatures from the surrounding area and neighbors in support of the project, as well as when we held the neighborhood workshop, the adjacent owner directly to the east, he was the only one that was in attendance at the neighborhood workshop. It was a great discussion, and he expressed his verbal support of the project as well. Other than that, I think the staff did a great job on putting everything together and happy to answer any questions or address anything that comes up from there.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just a brief one. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Bedford.
You're relocating their entrance on the east side? They've got like a dirt road on your side. You're going to move it over there or something?
Yes, yes, actually. That was discovered when the survey was done, and so, gentlemen, agreement that when we start construction, that it would be moved over immediately so that he doesn't have any issues with access to his property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any, yes, Mr. Bedford?
I just want to understand, when you said the neighbor to the east, who is that? Is that the big corner that's wraps around your property?
It's directly to the east. It's Mr. Hendrick. Can you say his last name correctly?
I can't remember.
He has a agricultural piece of property and has some things that he stored there, limited in access and use of it, I think, but it's directly, so, from the intersection of CR 675 and 301. If you turn right onto CR 675 and you go past the DOT retention pond.
Okay.
And you will see his dirt or shell access road into his property. That's the property owner to the east.
Okay, so you didn't have anybody to the west making complaint about your, at the meeting you had?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, we're going to open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion of the, excuse me, the hearing, and ask the commission, is there any additional information necessary to make a determination on this application? All right, hearing nothing. We're going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion, deliberation, or consideration of a motion, which has already been made. We have a motion by Mr. Rutledge, a second by Mr. Smock. If you would, please vote. All right, with that, the, the motion passes six zero, again with Mr. Roth being absent. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we're going to go on to item number five. And for clarification, all the items from five, five on are going to be scheduled presentations, so it's going to be a full presentation on the application. So, the first item, item number five, PDPI 23-11, Perenzi, Perenji Rehab Hospital. Ms. Greer, can you please read item five into the record?
PDPI 2311ZG Rehab Hospital, PLN 22090082. It's quasi-judicial, and it's, Marshall Robinson is here for staff, amending the official zoning atlas ordinance 1517 as amended by the Manatee County Land Development Code relating to zoning within the unincorporated area, providing for a rezone of approximately 3.87 acres, generally located on the south side of State Road 70, 53rd Avenue West, approximately one-half mile east of US 41 and commonly known as 404 53rd Avenue West. Bradenton, from PRM, which is Professional Office Medium and Residential Multifamily to Plan Development Public Interest zoning district, approving a general development plan for approximately 62,327 square feet of hospital rehab center, approving a schedule of permitted and prohibited uses as voluntary, voluntarily proffered by the applicant and attached as Exhibit B.
Very good. Thank you. Who do we have for the applicant? Good morning. If you could, please state your name, that you have been sworn, your county of residence, and you'll have 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Absolutely. Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Edwin Mueller, for the record, from Inside Studio. Our offices are in Palm Beach County, and I have been sworn in. This morning, on behalf of the applicant, we are requesting a rezoning from the PRM and RMF6 zoning classification to the Plan Development Public Interest zoning district with a GDP for 63,000 square feet of hospital rehabilitation center. We also have three specific approval requests, namely a setback reduction from 55 feet to 25 feet along our eastern edge, a elimination of a vehicle use landscape buffer on our western edge, and an elimination of the five-foot screening buffer along the western edge. Again, our site is located at the intersection of Fifth Street West and 53rd Avenue West. This is an urban corridor principal arterial as defined through the comp plan, and it was previously used as a financial institution. We're about a half mile from US 41, locally known as 14th Street, both of which are activity nodes. Just taking a look at the zoning around the site, the PRM and our residential zoning districts are consistent with what's seen along this corridor, and the use is going to be complementary with the uses that are along the 53rd Avenue corridor. In terms of the max development potential that is seen under the current zoning designations for the two properties, we would technically be allowed to build up to four stories with an FAR of 1.0 or the residential density of 20 units an acre using all density bonuses available. That being said, taking a closer look at the site, again, we're located at the intersection of Fifth Street West and 53rd Avenue with a 25-foot sliver belonging to the Chateau Village Mobile Home Park just to our west, and beyond that parcel, we have an FPL substation. To our east, there's a professional office, and there are three residential properties just to the southeast of the parcel. North of us is, directly north is 53rd Avenue and Urban Corridor Principal Arterial with a commercial use on the hard corner there and residential mobile home park on the northwest corner. Currently, the site has two access points. In coordination with FDOT, we've been asked and have been amenable to removing the westernmost access drive that's closest to the intersection. So, you will see in the GDP that we've removed that access point, and we're just keeping the one that's easternmost. And what we're proposing is a rehab hospital, 62, 63,000 square feet, more or less, three stories in height with 60 beds, 125 employees, and they're going to be across three eight-hour shifts. We are asking for deviations around setbacks and buffers, like I mentioned, but believe we have adequate justification for those. In terms of mitigating measures for what we're proposing, while the final site plan is not before you today, I think it's worth mentioning that we've located all the back-of-house quote-unquote uses, such as the loading dock and the loading zone dumpster, utility rooms, dumpster pickup, furthest away from the residential uses. So, those are located along the western edge of the property. We've got a retention pond on the backside of the property, 10-foot landscape buffers along the south and east. We've also been proposing a six-foot decorative wall to provide further buffering, and we do have that 10-foot right-of-way buffer along 53rd Avenue West. Speaking about the operator a little bit, this is going to be Nobis Rehabilitation Centers. They are a national operator, state-of-the-art facilities that provide services across multiple sort of medical conditions that require rehabilitation services, and they're excited to join the Manatee County community with this proposed development. This is a conceptual rendering of what the facility might look like. This is not before you for approval, but more so gives a flavor of what the development might look like, an internal perspective of just what the facility will look like. And then staff does assess this based on the criteria for rezoning, building high compatibility, general design requirements, whether this is in the interest of the public when it comes to the rezoning to the PDPI, and as far as the criteria for the specific approvals that we're requiring, it is also assessed with compliance towards that criteria. And in both cases, staff is in recommendation of approval across the board. That being said, I have other members from the team here on the, on the project that are available for questions. Thank you.
I think, I have a question. I might have misread something. The setback from 55 is being reduced to what?
25 feet, sir.
25? I thought I saw one of them. It said 35, but, one of the slides, but, okay. So, it's essentially, it's more than half the typical setback, and that's due to the height of the building.
Right, correct.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Rutledge.
I know you didn't ask yet, but I did have some relationship to this property when the tenant was in there, and I don't know if that matters to the...
Okay.
Commission for...
That points out something we've missed. So, on this app...
About a past employee relationship, not current.
Okay.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
So, it's not a voting conflict.
Okay.
All right, but just for clarification, on this application, have there been any ex parte communications?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Well, after this, we'll go back to the other ones.
We did.
Okay, thank you. I missed that part. I was absent. All right, thank you very much. Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Bedford?
So, can you explain where the wall is particularly?
Yes, of course.
And I assume any required landscaping will go on the outside, the exterior?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, we are proposing a six-foot decorative wall along the western, I mean, the eastern and southern edge of the property, and it's going to be inside of the landscaping. So, it's 10 feet into our property, and the landscaping will be on the outside. So, residents, those three residents on the southeast corner will be looking at lush vegetation and then the wall beyond that.
Okay, and while you're, while we have this up, we're not approving this site plan today. I want to make it clear to everyone here and out there that this is just a cartoon.
Correct, correct.
And we're approving a GDP and not necessarily this site plan.
Correct. This is a visual aid, just showing some of the mitigating measures that we're taking...
My last question is on the access parcel to the west, which I thought was owned by the property to the south. It looks like on the GDP, it shows a roadway easement on your property.
Correct. As of yesterday, I checked the property appraisal. That's owned by Chateau Village, a 25-foot sliver.
So, if you could, can you go to your actual GDP? So, that hatched area, is it on your property or not on your property?
This is within our property. That's a 25-foot access easement.
So, the Chateau property is to the west of that?
Correct.
So, they have an easement on your property, plus they have their own access piece?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
With regard to your request for a special exception, why wouldn't you slide the building over to the west and provide the required...
I asked that question as well, Mr. Chair.
The required separation from the property line for the building on the east side where there are residents.
Correct. So, in terms of circulation, that is the minimum distance that's needed for traffic pickup, loading, and that was the most appropriate placement in order for the, the building to work. I don't know if, sure.
Also, if you could go back to, again, the, the plan, the more illustrative plan.
Graphic, yep.
What are the uses that are on the western edge that are being represented in this particular graphic? I know, obviously, on the eastern side, it's building. What, what do we have on the western edge there?
Right, so those are some of the back-of-house uses. It's going to be the utility rooms. It's going to be where the loading dock and the loading zone are, the dumpsters on that side. So, we're putting some of the more intense uses away from the residential uses on the east.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bedford.
Since we're asking about this site plan, and I'm an architect, tell me why you can't move that building 25 feet to the west specifically?
Megan, you want to add?
Again, if you could state your name, that you have been sworn in your county of residence.
I'm Megan Veron, and I live in Pinellas County.
Very good. And you've been sworn?
I was sworn in, yes, in the original group. I'm, and I'm with Cross Development. We'll be the owner developer of the Nobis Rehab Hospital. So, the only way to push the building all the way to, so the, there's the access easement. So, if we wanted to push the building all the way adjacent to the 25-foot access easement, we would have to mirror the building, which would then put all of that back-of-house, including the generator, adjacent to the residential.
Why would you have to, what, what access issues are that that needs to be a two-lane road there specifically?
So, it's, if...
And I know that this is not something, because we're not talking about the final site plan, but if I just randomly want to make a stipulation, you're moving it 25 feet to the west.
Right.
Which we're thinking, then you need to give me a good reason why I can't do that.
Right, so, it's hard to tell. We wanted to share this with you so we could kind of walk everybody through it. So, with the loading dock, and we do have our architects who might be able to explain the functionality of that area a little bit better than I can.
You got room on the right side. I know 55-foot diameter travel for a semi-truck. I'm not sure why the truck can't come in on the east side.
I'm going to let our architect and engineer answer that.
And can I add to that question, when you're addressing this, is, is this a prototypical building that you're just stamping on here? It's a standard that you use. It's already a design building, and that's why you know all this? Because I, I think that's a question I have.
And on the east side, I see grass area on the east side.
Right.
That grass area certainly could be gone away with. It could get wider there so you can get dump trucks and everything into there, so...
Right, and if you could state your name, you're, that you've been sworn in county of residence. Thank you.
Absolutely. Stephen Anson, work for Perkins &amp; Will, Worthy Architects. I have been sworn in. I actually don't live in Florida. I live in Dallas. We do have a Miami office. Sorry, is that better?
Yeah.
Do I need to restate that?
Uh, maybe.
If you wanted to hear it, I guess.
No, worse than that. My name is Stephen Anson. I work for Perkins &amp; Will, Worthy Architects. I do not live in Dallas, or I do live in Dallas. I'm sorry. So, I don't live in Florida, but we do have a Miami office as well. And I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
Yep. So, the loading dock on the west side requires, of course, truck access, truck movability, and of course, it's noisy, right? So, we wanted to keep that away from the residential. That's why it's over on the west. Part of the reason why we can't push it farther is that access, the potential for the, for, for... Part of the reason why we can't push it farther is that access, the potential for the, for needing to put that road in there, and if we push the building farther over there, then the building is basically sitting at that access. And that precludes using of the dock properly. So that was part of the issue there. Over on the east side, we do have the landscape buffer, the screen wall, a one-way drive, and it's a two-way drive on the other side. And we looked at having originally the two-way drive over toward the residential side, and that, at that point, was to have the dock on that side. You were using some of that space to help make the dock work, and so by having the two-way drive on the other side of the building, it kind of precludes that a little bit.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to argue about your design, but certainly your retention pond shows a lot of area around this, so the retention pond can be redesigned. On the west side of that, you certainly could come in with a pull truck, pull a semi, first of all, a semi is not going to get into that loading dock, no matter what you do. So you're talking about small panel trucks anyway. There's more than enough room around the dumpster for a truck to pull straight in and then back into the dumpster. I think there's solutions here that allow the building to move to the west, but I'm not going to argue about it anymore. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and, make sure you're on your mic.
I'm on my mic now.
Yeah, yeah, all right. So, say all that again?
So, I'm not going to talk anymore.
All right.
So, the issue is that there's plenty of room on the west side, that dump, that retention pond can certainly be moved, there's a lot of green area around, and I know how retention ponds are designed. The dumpster also could get relocated, a truck could pull straight in, back in. With those kind of turning radiuses, you're not running semis in there, you're running panel trucks and small trucks, so they don't need a semi-truck kind of path. And I know there's neighbors involved to the south and to the east, and this is just a location where I'd like to push it as far west and as far north as I could get it.
Yes, sir, if I may, they do actually get forty-foot delivery trucks.
I'm sorry?
They do actually receive forty-foot delivery trucks.
But not semis? You're not pulling semis in there, because I find it unlikely that you're going to get a semi backed in there. Having, I could be wrong, but I know what Publix looks like in the back, and they don't look like that. Anyway, I'm done, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, any other questions for the applicant?
So, yes, sir, so the configuration of the building seems monolithic kind of in your commentary, so my question is, is this a prototypical building that you're going to stamp in there, or are you designing this building to go on this property?
Sure, from a functional standpoint, it is prototypical, but we do look at each site specifically, and so the outside of the building does change relative to each building.
Well, I'm kind of speaking to the commissioner's request. If you want to slide the building and you have a prototypical building, has all these things, that the dumpster goes on the left and faces to the front, you know, that's another issue. But if you say, I'm designing it to fit this, and I know you're not asking for that building design yet, but I think the question is, you've got residents there, you're putting a pretty intense three-story building there with around-the-clock kind of activity, more consideration might be seen more appropriate for the neighborhood.
Sure, and to address, I guess, around-the-clock activity, it's not that kind of a hospital. It is a twenty-four-hour facility, but it's not a facility that has people coming and going at all hours of the day like a normal acute care hospital. This is simply a inpatient physical therapy rehab hospital. So patients arrive during the day via transfer ambulances from acute care hospitals. You don't have the emergency traffic coming and going throughout the day or night. You will have staff changeover every eight hours or so, but it's not, and the end of the building closest to the residences on the east is actually a daytime activity, not a nighttime activity. So that's where like your administrative areas are.
I hear you, you're putting three stories of what used to be a single bank building there that had little activity, you're asking us to make exception to invite you in, which we want to have you, and great to have you. But we also have residents there, have been paying their taxes all these years, and they're thinking you're going to be a noisy neighbor.
That's right.
But, so anyway, your consideration on how to design it is paramount to me thinking that you should give an exception to come. Just a thought.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, all right, thank you very much. We're going to go on to staff presentation. Who do we have for staff? Morning, Marshall.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Marshall Robinson, I'm a staff planner, and I have been sworn. So much has been discussed about the location of the property, so I'll just kind of buzz right on to the, well, I'll stop here and say this first and foremost, so the request for the application is an appropriate request for the rezone to PDPI. This map here shows you the location of the property. It is located at a commercial activity node with the two qualifying roadways, the principal arterial and State Road Seventy, and the urban collector in Fifth Street West. Another look at the location of the property, so at the commercial activity node, we do kind of consider these types of uses to be infill development. I will say that the location of this property is in the urban service area, it's in the southwest tax incremental financing district, and it's also in the community redevelopment area. Here's a look at the site plan that was submitted, it's a GDP. Something to talk about, the level of detail, you know, I think what was discussed, based on the working copy of a concept plan that was to suggest what staff should anticipate on an FSP when it gets submitted, I think that was the applicant's good faith nature to try to be transparent, to show a quality design, but it's certainly not appropriate to subject that working copied document to the level of detail for required FSP approval. Obviously, if the dumpsters didn't work at FSP, we'd make comments about that, and we would situate and locate those placement of the dumpsters to be appropriate. Also, under an FSP level detail, we would also do the internal site circulation to make sure that the drive aisles and the parking and all that kind of stuff work. We did have a conversation about trying to slide the building further to the west to back it off of the residents to the east, and what you heard today is the explanation, was the explanation that was provided to me. The one thing that I would correct the applicant, which the presentation was wonderful, he checked all the information I wanted to provide here. Staff doesn't make recommendations, so staff didn't give a recommendation of approval or recommendation of denial, we're just on a fact-finding mission for compliance with the regulations in our LDC and consistency with our comp plan. This is in the Res Nine Future Land Use category. It's a medium-density residential category, but it does offer incentives to fill these nodes up with intensity and FAR, like square footage and height, and the applicant has done that. The applicant has satisfied our requirements for 401.5, which is additional separation or additional mitigation measures for anything that increases or over three stories. One thing I want to point out is the 401.5 building compatibility. That's really where the specific approval to the eastern boundary came into play. We have a provision in the code that says, any buildings over thirty-five feet in height shall be equal to or greater than the distance from the property line for the building heights. In this case, we're talking about a fifty-five-foot building, so we need fifty-five feet of separation on the east, and they asked to deviate from that fifty-five-foot requirement and provide twenty-five feet along the east boundary, and that's where that specific approval is coming from, on the twenty-five feet to the east. Of course, we have the access easement to the west, and then west of that, we have the Florida Power and Light Substation that occupies a significant amount of acreage. If you take a look at the aerial here, well, I don't guess, don't have it. Well, perhaps here you can see next to the white box there, you know, that provides additional separation off to the west, which, you know, in my mind, was a pretty decent mitigating measure for, you know, not being able to get the building closer to the west side of the property. I don't know what that gets you, because right immediately next door, we have the acreage of a substation, so, you know, the real protection, I think, was to the south, where we don't have the benefit of a utility substation like to the west. So when we look to the south, we go back to the site plan to see what kind of mitigation was contemplated there, and you'll see a hundred and eighty-two feet of separation off that south boundary. So, you know, it sounded like it was a good compromise, and they benefited from the fortuitous fact that they do have that substation that separates the western residents from the subject property. So we felt like a good balance between that separation off the south with a hundred and eighty-two feet, they're giving us fifty-five feet on the west to include the distance between the west boundary and over on the eastern edge of where the residents are along State Road Seventy there. So that's how we arrived at that. It is a general development plan. General development plans are conceptual in nature. Any deviations from any code requirements, we memorialize here in these specific approvals, but when it gets to an FSP level, then I want everybody to know that that's when the engineering, the drainage, the stormwater, all of the technical review will take place. So, in a GDP, for a rezone, we're setting the parameters for minimums, and we're, you know, identifying any code provisions that need relief. And if the planning commission feels that that's inadequate, then that's when we would look to a preliminary site plan versus a general development plan. If the things that are being raised from a site design concern, then that's when staff would be, you know, encouraging the applicant to submit a more detailed preliminary site plan to bring before the planning commission, but based on the nature of the request and how the request has been facilitated in accordance with the land development code, we thought a general development plan was appropriate at this location. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, very good. Any questions for staff?
I just want to say, I appreciate, Marshall, and I have a lot of confidence in staff, and I, these comments are just thoughts of ours, not implications that you wouldn't get to them later, but I appreciate your thoughts, because I do think it brings us back to the question of, you guys haven't finished all the work for the residents, and so, I like this group coming in. I do think it's good transitional from, you know, we go to the corner where there's that high intensity at forty-one, the wah-wah and all the stuff over there, which is appropriate, and this is in that node, which I didn't realize it was that close. So I think your comments are helpful for me, I think I understand better, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bedford.
The side required, the side yard required setbacks at fifty-five feet, can you go over again where that number comes from? That it's not fifty, or sixty, or fifty-seven, but it's fifty-five?
Commissioner Bedford, it doesn't say fifty-five specifically, it says that when you, any building over the height of thirty-five feet
Your staff report says setback side or required is fifty-five feet.
Yeah, it's fifty-five feet, because they have a fifty-five-foot tall building. And so whenever you exceed
Required.
I'm sorry?
So it is required, so fifty-five feet is required?
Yes, hence the reason they have a specific approval to request deviation from that fifty-five foot down to twenty-five feet along the east.
On the east side?
On the east side. They're still subject to a fifty-five-foot setback on the west side, because they have a fifty-five-foot tall building, which is the reason why they provided fifty-five feet on the west, and they exceeded it to the south.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff? All right, hearing none, we're going to go ahead and go to public comment. So I have one speaker signed up. Sharon Mitchell, if you would, please come forward, state your name, county of residence that you've been sworn, and you'll have three minutes. Have you been sworn?
Yes, my name is Sharon Mitchell, I'm from Manatee County, and I've been sworn.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. We received the notification, and the notification says four oh four Fifty-third Street West, when actually, I believe it's four oh four Fifty-third Avenue West and four oh six, both of those. I kind of looked it up, and I got that from the approximate acreage. Anyway, I have questions. I don't think that the residents have been notified, you know, a lot of the people that are in Chateau Village are snowbirds, so they're not here. And the ones I've talked to, I've talked to a few that said they never got notification of, you know, adjacent property ownership, and that this was even going on. So I don't know what the process is to extend it so that more people can be here after they come into the area, so that you have a better idea. We didn't know, it doesn't say anything about it being a PT acute care, which I'm not really sure what that is. Physical therapy, I get, but acute care is that drug rehab as well as physical therapy? And I did some research, and it just looks like, and this is old research, I mean, it's old, something that I found, and it says that a rehab can lower the property value seventeen percent, which I'm sure concerns all the people that live adjacent to the rehab. Also, the fact that the drive, the street Fifty-third Avenue, and going in and out of that facility, I think is going to cause a lot of congestion, you know, especially since they said that they were going to lower it to just one entrance, going in and out. What else? Okay, and I think that's pretty much basically it. The main thing is, I don't think enough people in the residential area like the people to the east. I don't even know if they were notified, or if they knew what they were reading when they got the notification. I haven't been able to get over there to talk to them, to find out what they felt about this, so, and that's, I guess, all I have to say.
Very good, and just for clarification, just so maybe you can communicate, the planning commission's a recommending board, our job is to vet an application and to bring up technical questions, maybe just to provide the Board of County Commissioners, who are the deciding body, that they're better informed. So there will be another hearing, regardless of what happens today, that will be in front of the Board of County Commissioners, and you, I don't know if we have a date set, but that'll be advertised.
On this, it says November second, and that says Manatee County Board of County Commissioners.
Yes, yes.
My question is, is there any way to move that until
Well, let me, let me go to the other part of this.
Okay.
So there are noticing requirements, and it has to do with distance from the subject property, the application, so the noticing may not be everybody in the neighborhood, it may be just to the people who are adjacent, a distance, I don't know what the distance is, it's usually like five hundred or seven hundred and fifty, in this case, it's five hundred. I'm seeing a head nod. So those are the folks who are noticed. If you're more than five hundred feet from the property, you may not be noticed, there may be like an HOA that gets noticed, but the residents that are further wouldn't necessarily get noticed. And the fact that there are people who are not present, that doesn't have any bearing on the process, it's a process that is
So they could go ahead with this even without our input? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am, if it's properly noticed, yes, ma'am. So, the fact that there are people that are out, that doesn't really have any bearing on the, on the process, so.
Wow.
Mr. Chairman?
And again, we're a recommending body, the deciding body will be the Board of County Commissioners. You know when that meeting is, so if you, if you
I'll be there.
Yeah.
Ma'am.
Mr. Bedford.
So, do you own your lot, or do you, is this a
It's a co-op.
Okay.
Yeah, so all of them own it.
So it's entirely likely that that co-op got noticed?
Right.
But not you, because you're not an owner?
We are the owner. We each have a share.
They would?
Yeah, they have a separate, they're all separate parts.
Yep.
Okay, and so the applicant has an affidavit that they noticed properly? They're all shaking their heads, okay, thank you.
And that's in the public record, too. It'll be part of the application package, so, thank you, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wishes to come speak on this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion, and just so the commission's clear, once we close the public hearing, there's going to be no more testimony, so if you have any questions, we need to discuss them now.
Just a question, is a neighborhood meeting required for this type of applicant?
I believe in Manatee, let's just talk in broad terms, Manatee County neighborhood meetings are not required, they're highly encouraged, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Recommended, so.
So there was no neighborhood meeting, obviously?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, and Ms. Schenk may say it's not relevant for here, which might completely be true. So on the west-hand side, there's an access easement in favor of the people to the south, and I'm wondering, you're proposing a wall that goes in front of their landscape easement or their access easement? Not sure that you can do that or not. Also, I don't know if that landscape easement can be utilized for buffering, so is the buffering going to be in the landscape easement, or is the wall and the buffering going to be on the east side of that landscape easement? Thus getting into your room for your trucks on the west side, anyway? And as I said, these things might not be able to be hammered out now, but certainly might be a question at the county commission meeting.
Yeah, that might be something the applicant can address as, as the question related to the public, I mean, sorry, the neighborhood workshop or neighborhood meeting. So are there any specific questions for staff?
Well, I asked Ms. Schenk if she had an opinion on the legal issue of that.
I don't need to ask staff, they can't wall off the easement. Can you give an indication where they're doing that? I'm trying to get to the
Marshall Robinson, staff planner, I have been sworn, yeah. So for that level of detail, again, you know, that's where we would require a preliminary site plan, but otherwise stated, no, they can't put the wall or anything over anybody's easement, they would have to stay out of that, which is an item of They would have to stay out of that, which is an item of review for final site plan. So if they did show up on their FSP and they were covering up someone's easement with a wall, first comment would be is that you can't put the wall in the easement unless, of course, that they got some sort of permission from the, from the shareholder of the easement that it would allow them to do that. But that easement, they wouldn't be able to put any of their buffering or any of their walls or anything like that, and we'd cover that under the detailed review of a final site plan.
I was just trying to get ahead of the battle when they come in and they show a wall there, and they say, well, the general development plan showed a wall across it. Your board approved the general development plan here, and there's a wall, and now you have an argument.
Well, we would certainly have a comment, and they would have to resubmit to come into compliance with the rules and regulations.
Yeah, and the other question that I would ask the applicant to address is if that's an exclusive easement or it has rights that are granted to the property owner. So that, that might be a more relevant question, so.
Well, I'm up here, Commissioner. I just want to say that I did feel some calls over the week, talking about the noticing question that came up. I did field about four or five different calls from surrounding neighbors. They just wanted to make sure that it was not a drug rehab center, so that, you know, the noticing with Bobby and everything in our office, she has all the records of who got noticed per the requirements. And I feel like the notice worked because I took some calls this week.
Very good, thank you. All right.
Sorry, I was on the board.
But... Oh, you don't use that.
I just wanted to say again that the, the concept plan that was up, we cannot use that when we go to FSP. And if you do feel like, you could recommend a PSP if that's something that you feel is required in this area. But it is in an activity node, so this is the type of use that we would put in those activity nodes.
Right, and acknowledge that it was given for informational purposes, but what it did highlight was one of the requests, which is the special exception related to the separation. And I think that's probably going to be the main topic there.
And staff should request a revised GDP that shows that that wall is not within that easement.
I don't believe the GDP shows that.
It's a solid line, it's hard to tell to me. It's shown on the other side, that's the wall, so...
Yeah, we can certainly have the, we can certainly have the applicant's. Yeah, we can, we can, you know, if, if it's the will of the planning commission to make a stipulation that we revise the GDP to clean that up, we can do that. Or I can do a mid-cycle and work with the applicant to get that sheet corrected that does not show any buffering or anything like that impeding that easement, of course.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, one last, and I think this is for staff, so I think you'll let me ask the question, but it kind of rips the bandaid off again. So this is a PDPI, right?
Yes, sir.
Which means the normal rules don't apply. We just learned that earlier this morning.
But...
Well, thanks, I did learn that.
So since the normal rules, I'll be quiet because you know where I'm going with that.
So the plan development, whether it's PDPI, PDR, PDC, PMU, all plan developments are subject to 402.6, which talks about design quality. It talks about flexibility and return for innovation in, in design. And, you know, the, the general development plan that comes in is a lesser plan to establish minimum requirements and to establish access and to establish any need for any deviation of code requirements. Now, if they come in for a GDP and it doesn't show a lot of detail because they don't want to lean to the balance of the code requirements to supplement the design of their project, then you'll start seeing a list of specific approvals being requested. And when those lists elevate itself to a concern, that's when we recommend a preliminary site plan. But given the nature of this project with the access, the separation distances, and the degree of relief sought from the LDC, we figured that a, that a general development plan would be appropriate. So I don't, it's not that they're not subject to any of the rules, it's just when they're silent on their rules, the LDC minimum code requirement picks up and carries the rule of the day forward unless otherwise stated on a plan or in an ordinance.
All right, thank you. All right, so again, forewarning, if there's any questions, they need to be asked now. Otherwise, we're going to have staff closing comments, the applicant rebuttal, and we'll be closing. Mr. Rutledge, yes?
So I would like to clarify the point that in giving the approval, do we need to make a stipulation that it's not the expectation to provide any unintended approvals because of the wall, where the wall sits? That's kind of...
I don't know that a wall is a binding element on a GDP. There are certain things that are binding. I don't know if a wall being shown on a GDP is binding.
No, it's not, it's not exactly required because it's already required in the code. So at FSP, we'll be looking for that buffering and that screening to meet the, the criteria wrote out in the staff report. But again, if it makes everybody feel better, we're, we're happy to make a stipulation and then make them change the GDP before we resume any review on the FSP that might be submitted, to make sure we're consistent across all the plans.
I think it's more appropriate to understand that a GDP is a graphical representation of intent. It's not, it's not measured.
Okay, I just want to, again, precedent is probably more important than the question itself, so... But again, Marshall, I trust you implicitly to torture them to the highest extent possible. Just kidding.
I wouldn't torture anyone.
I'm just kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
All right, anything further before we go to staff closing comments? All right, Mr. Robinson, no additional closing comments. Applicant rebuttal, closing statement. Somebody?
Last chance.
Yeah.
Just very quickly, we have no issue revising the GDP to show the landscaping and the wall outside of the easement. And again, I don't think I need to belabor the point that the infographic was just shown for informative purposes. We're not processing an FSP at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, with that, we're going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion, deliberation. I'll, I'll start. I understand the operation of a rehab hospital. I understand this is where folks go when they leave an emergency hospital and they can't go home yet, they have to go someplace. So usually they go to a rehab for, you know, 10 days, two weeks, whatever it might be, for typically insurance purposes. Not overly concerned about the operation. This is a needed use in Manatee County. The problem I have is the request for the special exception for the height. We have neighbors that typically you would expect a building like this that would increase the separation to, to provide. That's the main issue I have here is the special exceptions that are, that are being, being brought up. So for that reason, I'm not supporting the application.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bedford.
Yeah, and I completely agree with you. I'm in favor of the building and all that kind of stuff. I'm not in favor of the reductions in setbacks, and I'll be voting against it only for that reason. It's a custom-designed building, and as a licensed architect in the state of Florida, if you need any help, let me know. But I'm pretty sure you could probably redesign it so it can meet the setbacks on both sides.
Any other deliberation?
I would just say, I'm kind of at the opposite end of that. I think the delta, the impact of this to the neighbors is de minimis because of the conduct inside. And I do think the transition in that area, this would be an upgrade in that. And having seen that property at length and the values and so forth, I think this is a very good move forward. I think we could certainly request, and they would certainly accommodate everything they can do to meet the codes and not ask for the exceptions, if it's possible. But I'm not an expert in truck turnarounds and dumpster locations and the transformers on the east side that maybe could be moved. But, but you understand the concern, and I think we're going to look for them to come back with their site plan and see if it doesn't meet Mr. Marshall's expectations.
So are you suggesting it needs to be a PSP?
I'm just suggesting I'm going to vote in favor of the submission as is provided.
Okay, including the special exceptions.
Including the exception, yeah.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion, deliberation?
I also agree with the chair and others about the, the setback being half of what it really should be, especially since it is adjacent to residential. I'm all for the use. I think it's a great use, much needed, and on, on the arterial that it's located. It's just the proximity to the residential and asking for a special approval for that when it's, it's really significantly less.
Okay, all right. With that, we have, we do have a motion for approval by Mr. Rutledge and a second by Mr. Spock. I almost said Spock. Mr. Smock. So if you could, please vote. And again, it is for approval, so... So the motion dies, I'm sorry, not dies, it was denied two to four with myself, Mr. Delezline, Ms. Kebba, and Mr. Bedford voting against, Mr. Rutledge and Mr. Smock voting in favor.
So Mr. Chair, this is quasitional, so you got to look to a motion for denial then.
Okay, so would somebody be interested in providing a motion for denial?
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny.
Okay, motion to...
As stated in the staff report, motion to denial.
Okay.
And again, it's not for the project, it's not for, it's, it's for that setback. You come back and you have something different when you take it to the, to the board, if you make different choices. It's not the use, not the location for me. It just has to do with that setback issue.
All right, we have a motion.
Oh, he moved. I'll second that.
All right, actually, we have a motion by Mr. Delezline, a second by Mr. Bedford, if you would. Please vote for the motion for den- denial. And just for the, the neighbors, this...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I ask a question?
Uh, hold on.
Is it a technical time?
Nope, it's not the right time. So we have a motion to deny, if you, a motion to deny by Mr. Delezline, a motion, a second by Mr. Bedford, if you would, please vote. All right, that, that motion passes four to zero, again, with Mr. Smock and Mr. Rutledge against, so...
Four to, I think, not four to.
Four to, I'm sorry.
I'm not a math guy, but I...
Once a motion's made, that, we're not going to get any additional information to them, so... Mr. Robinson, is there anything post?
No, I, I understand the motion's been made and the, and the recommendation's been made. I was just thinking, you know, that we could probably work with the applicant to revise it instead of having to bring them back through the rigors of a full-scale review over that one item. I was thinking a revision could be in order and maybe the opportunity for the applicant to continue it.
The applicant has the ability to present that to the board, so...
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, let's go ahead and just take a 15-minute break. Or, I'm sorry, 10 minutes, 10 minutes. All right, we're going to call the meeting back to order. Ms. Schenk, during the break, I informed you that I mistakenly voted on an application where I should have recused myself. What is the direction from the county attorney's office?
Okay, so we have to go back to item number two, Gerschiani parcel, PDC thirteen thirty PR two, and reopen deliberation portion of the public hearing. So, we want to just reopen that?
Um.
Oh, walk it through, just reopen it.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Just, just reopen, you can reopen it.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open up item number two, PDC thirteen thirty P, uh, PRN P, PRN R two.
Okay, so do you have a conflict of interest still, number two?
Yes, ma'am.
So please abstain from voting.
Okay.
I don't care if you leave the table or not.
Okay, I'll, I'll just sit here.
So, we need someone to consider making another motion on Gerschiani, which was the motion to approve.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve number two as in the motion submitted.
And a second from someone?
I'll sec.
Okay, and then the vote?
In favor of item number two, please. Aye. Same sign. Motion carries unanimously with the exception of Mr. Connolly, who recused himself due to a conflict of interest.
And Mr. Roth being absent.
I'm sorry?
And Mr. Roth be.
And Mr. Roth being absent.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Pay attention, Bill.
He didn't have his mic on.
Oh.
Aw, man.
So, just to summarize, Mr. Bedford, if you would, just please summarize what occurred.
We just voted to approve number two. The mo- the motion was to approve, it was seconded, it was seconded, and it was approved five to nothing, I believe.
Yes.
Five to nothing with Mr. Connolly recusing himself due, due to a conflict of interest and Mr. Roth being absent.
Well said.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all right, with that mess cleaned up, and I apologize for that, I'm, I should resign from the planning commission.
Oh, wait a minute, you did, huh?
Um, we're going to move on to the next item, which is item number six, PDC twenty-two dash twenty, PRN Z, PRN P, Commercial Shopping Centers at sixty-four and E-line Road. Ms. Greer, can you please read item number six into the record?
Mr. Chair, I'll take the, the reading in if you don't mind.
Oh, I was like, somebody's talking. All right.
Yeah, okay. Item number six, PDC dash twenty-two dash twenty, in PRN Z, in PRNs P, Commercial Shopping Center at State Road sixty-four and E-line Road, NAP McEast LLC and SMR Northeast LLC Owners. This is a rezone of approximately fourteen point eight-nine acres from A, General Agriculture, to the PDC Plan Development Commercial Zoning District, approving a preliminary site plan with a maximum square footage allowed for the entire development, including a main parcel, four out parcels, out parcel one through out parcel four, two retail parcels, retail A and retail B, and associated infrastructure being limited to eight, eighty thousand square feet of commercial and retail uses. The fourteen point eight-nine acres is located within the MUC AC one, Mixed Use Community Center Level One, Future Land Use Category, and is generally located at the southwest corner of State Road sixty-four East, Manatee Avenue East, and E-line Road, Bradenton, and approving a schedule of permitted and prohibited uses as voluntarily proffered by the applicant and attached as Exhibit B. Loretta Merrill is your case manager, and representing the applicant is Kyle Grimes.
Very good, thank you. And for the planning commissioners, have there been any ex parte communications regarding this application?
No, sir.
All right, hearing none. Good morning, Mr. Grimes. If you could state your name, that you've been sworn, your county of residence, and you'll have fifteen minutes to present your application.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Kyle Grimes, attorney with the law firm of Grimes Galvano here in Manatee County. I have been sworn. I'm here today on behalf of the applicants, NAP McEast LLC and SMR Northeast LLC. With me today, I do have Mark Turner, Vice President with North American Properties, or NAP, Nathan Croft, our engineer with ZNS, and Michael Yates with Palm Traffic. North American Properties has been working here in Manatee County for many years, and in fact, they just completed their seventh public shopping center here in Manatee County. And what we're requesting today is for approval to continue that forward and, and for another commercial shopping center in an area of the county that is being largely and rapidly developed with residential projects, and to provide that support uses in that area. The property we're talking about is at the southwest corner of State Road sixty-four and E-line Road in East County, right at the intersection of those two major thoroughfare roadways. The property is just under fifteen acres in total. The future land use of this property, it, it's part of what's known as the northeast quadrant in your comprehensive plan, and with that brings a future land use of Mixed Use Community Activity Center Level One, which is a mouthful, but i- it's a designation that's been put over a great area out here in envisioning a broad mix of residential as well as a supportive commercial uses. This project, or property, rather, is also part of the northeast quadrant local development agreement, and that was an LDA that was approved and processed by Schrader Manatee Ranch back in two thousand eighteen, and it spelled out the, the plan for development of this entire region. And that Exhibit B you see on the right side of your screen was the exhibit to the LDA that kind of set out where we anticipate to have commercial and retail uses as well as the areas of residential. The subject parcel you can see kind of circled in, in red at the top center of that Exhibit B, and it's identified as Commercial Parcel C one, and it was designated with, with just over a hundred and eighty thousand square feet of commercial res- retail in that local development agreement. And importantly, with that LDA, that spelled out all of the transportation concurrency items and things upfront for the, the build-out of this project, and identified the, the various prop share mitigation projects, which have since all been completed, and that's things like the construction of E-line Road, Forty-Fourth Avenue, Rangeland, and Bourne Side, as well as, as some other things. And those have all been completed to satisfy the concurrency obligations with regard to transportation for this project and the others in the northeast quadrant. So that brings us to our, our request before you today, and that is for a rezone of this project from general agriculture to plan development commercial. And as you can see in this zoning map, this, this area is rapidly developing and primarily with planned development residential uses. And so, you know, our, our proposal to put a commercial shopping center here at the, this node, at the corner of two major thoroughfares, we, we feel is very appropriate and will provide much-needed non-residential support uses out in this area. With our request, we are also, are asking for approval of our preliminary site plan, which as opposed to a general development plan gives a little more detail. And what we're proposing is one anchor parcel that will have a, anticipate to have a grocery type use there, and four out parcels for future commercial and retail uses. And although the, the land, excuse me, local development agreement provided for a maximum of a hundred and eighty, we're only seeking eighty thousand square feet as a maximum for all of the parcels within the, the preliminary site plan, and we feel that is more than adequate and appropriate, given the size of the property. We are proposing three access locations to E-line Road and one to State Road sixty-four. During this application process, we've met many times with your staff, with, with Ms. Greer, as well as Public Works Department and Scott May, to make sure that these access locations are going to work with the future build-out of this intersection, which is currently planned through FDOT as a roundabout. We've also had multiple meetings and discussions with FDOT so that, you know, we, we make sure we're going to meet the needs of that area and, and matching the design of the ultimate build-out of that intersection. And, and with the site plan, we are providing all the, the required and necessary buffering, including our roadway buffers, and more importantly, our perimeter green belt buffers and screening buffers to the resident, residential developments to the west and to the south. With the, the project directly to the west, which is on the bottom of your screen there, our, our client has worked with the developer of that property to make sure there's a, there's a nice berm as well as vegetative screening in that area. So with that, we do not have any requests for specific approval. We appreciate staff's work in this and, and their staff report and agree with its findings that this is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the land development code. Myself or, or any members of our team would be happy to answer any other questions you may have. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant?
Uh, yes, sir. So, I'm not a big fan of roundabouts, and I'm just curious, this distance and the D-cell lane and the way this is designed, this is all DOT approved, or you submitted to DOT?
We, we have nothing to do with the roundabout with this project. That is going through a completely separate. We just wanted to make sure that we met and, and got the current design. Their design is not even finalized yet, but the most recent up-to-date design so that we could design our access points so that they're not, you know, in opposition to what they're planning. And we'll have to continue to work with FDOT and the county moving forward to make sure that, you know, everything is meeting those requirements.
Because I don't see this with, with the two lanes and a D-cell lane, so my, it doesn't seem complete to me, just as a.
I'm, I'm gonna have Michael Yates come up, but it.
Just kidding.
Oh, the traffic guy talk.
The traffic guy, okay, now I know who it is, okay.
Good morning, Michael Yates, Palm Traffic, and I have been sworn. So, yeah, we did a full detailed analysis of this, and we worked with county staff and FDOT staff on the proximity of the roundabout design, what that design is going to look like, and the location of the access points, and the type of access points. So we're doing right-hand turn lanes at each of the driveways, we're doing a directional left in at the middle driveway, and so, yes, all this has been vetted through county staff. Scott made the county engineer, as well as FDOT in their review as well.
One additional question, was there a, an analysis, an ice analysis performed, and did DOT require that, or was it?
They did not require that. They are going through the design review of that roundabout as a separate project that is not related to this project.
Okay.
As an expert in traffic, Mr. Traffic Guy, how comfortable are you with the right turn-in off sixty-four when you don't have any D-cell on the adjacent property side? It seems a little abrupt to go into that, then narrow it back down, and then go right out.
And, and that was a lot of conversation with DOT. We worked through that with DOT to get that separation and get that design for that approach to the roundabout. So, we have gone through extensive conversations on each of these access points. So, we believe it will work, DOT believes it will work, and the county believes it will work.
Are you going to recommend that design anywhere else?
It, it's on the approach to a roundabout, and so each one is going to be distinct. So, the, when they work on the approach to an intersection, obviously, but that is why it's limited to right-in, right-out, and limited movements at that intersection, and why the access to E-line Road is so important in that configuration.
And, and how far are you from the curvature of the roundabout, if you took the?
I think it's about six hundred feet, a little west. I don't.
So, you know, the old standard used to be a thousand feet, and now we're six hundred feet to.
No, for a right-in, right-out on the approach to an intersection, I, for DOT on the worst case is six sixty. So, we're in that range of, the worst case on a DOT, that's a class-three facility, fifty-five miles an hour. When you dip below that, you're typically four forty or three thirty. So, it's, it's with, it's within the proximity of their standards.
You gonna shop here?
What's that?
Yeah.
Uh, so, again, this has been vetted by DOT and vetted through DOT as to this is what they would permit.
And, and again, it's not part of the application, so.
The roundabout itself, yes.
I understand, but I mean.
So, what are you suggesting, another roundabout there, so we have two?
Yeah, six of them, a bunch of them. I, I, I hate them, so that's just my personality, but.
You're, you're showing your age.
Yeah, I know. But, but the point is that that's a short stroke to get back out there, you've got a roundabout coming up, got a lot of activity for a car.
Understood, and again, as we're going through this review process, DOT is going to be part of it, the county's going to be part of it, and so, this isn't the final design for the roundabout, and so, as all that gets designed and permitted, you're still, we're still going to have to get that permit from DOT.
So, the other part of this question kind of comes to mind is, you've got these three out parcels there, you make an immediate right, are you, are you asking for any access immediately left into those out parcels, or are you going to have to go back to the backside of the out parcels to get in?
We have, we're going to meet the throat-depth requirements from the entries.
Paul, look at the graphic up.
Yeah, I am, I'm looking at it, just I kind of wanted him to say that to me. Okay.
All right, any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bedford.
Um, the, um, just a Scrivener's error.
The, just a Scrivener's error. On the arrow, on the site plan you show with the aerial on the east side, the middle entrance is called left-in, right-out. Here it's shown left-in, right-in, right-out. I'm sure this is what you want and not the one on the aerial. So just correct that conflict.
Yeah, it is right-in, left-in, right-out.
Right. And on the aerial one, it just doesn't show that. They don't, they're not the same. My second question is, is ownership, is SMR still an owner or not?
It's split ownership, so there's two parcels. SMR is still an owner of approximately five acres. NAP McEast is owner of the remainder of it. And, you know, when we get this approval and go forward, SMR will, NAP will purchase that from SMR, and it'll go under NAP ownership moving forward. It's tough to see on the GIS because it kind of goes over that little farm road.
I know. But that's why there's two affidavits of ownership, because it's a split ownership.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. All right, we're going to close the applicant's portion and open it up for staff. Good morning.
Good morning, Loretta Merrill's staff. I have been sworn.
Thank you very much.
All right, as stated, we are here for the commercial shopping center at State Road 64 and U-line Road. Here's the location. The current and future land use category is MUC AC1. Current zoning, as stated, is a general agriculture. The request is for 80,000 square feet of commercial retail uses in a PDC zoning with a preliminary site plan with four out parcels and two retail parcels and a main parcel, and a schedule permitted and prohibited uses as proffered by the applicant. Here's the site plan, as you've already seen, with the access points circled. Positive aspects is the site is located at a commercial node, which is appropriate for this development. The site has frontage on State Road 64 East, which is arterial, and U-line Road a collector. Commercial development is occurring along State Road 64 corridor and the center section specifically, and timing is consistent with development trends in the area. Negative aspects is that the site does abut single-family residences to the south and west, and there may be potential negative impacts relative to lights, glare, and noise to residential areas. The mitigating measures are that a lighting plan will be required in compliance with LDC regulations, and the site will provide the required buffers and screening adjacent to residential development. We have a few general stipulations. Kind of hard to read. The use as approved shall be voluntary proffered, as shown in Exhibit B. At time of FSP, they will meet all parking ratios. At time of FSP, they will meet all 531 specific use criteria. The site is eligible to be considered for this requested rezone, and it does meet the mixed-use commercial activities center Level 1 category. And the request with required, well, sorry, there are no specific approvals, but it may be found to be in compliance with LDC and requirements and consistent with the comprehensive plan. I'm here if you have any questions.
Very good. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bedford.
Is the county requiring right-of-way from the applicant? And if so, is it sufficient enough to allow for whatever design is ending up with the roundabout? Or we just really don't know that now, we'll deal with it later?
Yeah.
Mr. Grimes said he can answer that on his rebuttal, so that's fine, or now, whatever you want.
I can address that very quickly. So the right-of-way's already been there for E-line Road, but we are providing right-of-way reservation for future expansion of State Road 64.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grimes.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Hearing nothing further, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. I don't have anybody signed up to speak, but if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward on this application, please do so. Seeing no one come forward, for the commissioners, any additional information necessary? Okay. We'll go to staff closing comments? Nothing? Applicants rebuttal? Nothing? All right. We're going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion, deliberation, or a motion. We have a motion by Mr. Bedford. A second by Mr. Rutledge. If you would, go ahead and vote.
Can I voice my concern about roundabouts again?
I think it's well documented.
I think so.
They can read the minutes. All right, motion passes 6-0, again with Mr. Roth being absent. All right, that takes us to item number seven, which is a county-initiated land development code text amendment. Are these to be opened separately? Is that the idea? Okay, all right.
Yep.
All right. Item number seven, who would be reading that one? Ms. Greer, if you could, please?
Got my breath back. Land Development Code Text Amendment 2312, Ordinance 2398. County-initiated Land Development Code Text Amendment, Mobile Vending, PLN 23060086. It is legislative, and Charles Andrews is here for staff. Amending the Manatee County Land Development Code, providing the purpose and intent, providing findings. Amending Land Development Code, Chapter 2, Definitions, Chapter 4, Zoning, Chapter 5, Standards for Accessory and Specific Uses in Structures, and Chapter 10, Transportation Management to Define the Use of Mobile Vending, to add mobile vending units as an accessory and temporary use, to add mobile vending parks as a use in a specified zoning district, to set forth specific use criteria for mobile vending units, mobile vending parks, and applicable parking standards, providing for other amendments as may be necessary for internal consistency, providing for codification, providing for applicability, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Andrews, if you would, please state your name that you've been sworn, and if you could, introduce the application.
Good morning, Commissioner Charles Andrews. I have been sworn with staff, principal planner. And I do have a PowerPoint here. Okay. So as it was written to the record, we have a Land Development Code Text Amendment for Mobile Vending. A little bit of background on this, so we're looking to address an increase in requests for mobile vending uses within unincorporated Manatee County. Presently, mobile vending is not a recognized use within the Land Development Code. This amendment proposes to add mobile vending as a permitted use in select zoning districts to mirror the restaurant use and to establish standards and specific criteria, or specific use criteria for said use. Proposed changes, we've got several here. So Chapter 2, Definitions, we're adding definitions to establish mobile vending use. Chapter 4, we're adding this use in for scheduled uses to the Euclidian Standard districts and the PD districts, like I said, to mirror the restaurant use. Chapter 5, we have three different scenarios here from section, rather, 511, 521, and 531, which are accessory use, temporary use, and specific use criteria. So I'm going to go into that real quick. So under the accessory use, this scenario would apply to standalone individual mobile vending units with a maximum of two mobile vending units that are in simultaneous operations, so two at the same time, and are subordinate to a commercial establishment or other principal use. So essentially, it'd be like a big box commercial establishment, maybe a Home Depot or Lowe's or something you see like that, with a food truck that operates on-site. That's the accessory use scenario.
Mr. Chairman, since we're on that one, you say a big box, only big box? Is there some...
Not only big box, just as an example in the community.
All right, so there's no limiting square feet involved?
No, sir. Great question. Next scenario is the temporary use, and this applies to standalone individual mobile vending units on property which have an active retail sale or commercial use. Seating, permanent power source, and overnight parking are prohibited. Like I said, this is a temporary use for this site. And this would reflect the temporary nature of the use. So the example of this is food truck that is serving lunch on an established active or commercial site. So come in for a couple hours, serve lunch, and then they're off the site. The last one here is, the scenario is specific use criteria. So this one here, this would apply to a mobile vending park, and this has a minimum of three mobile vending units that are in simultaneous operation that have an established mobile vending pad area with all applicable permanent utility services necessary for the mobile vendor to operate. Permanent restroom, solid waste, and related facilities would be required and provided on-site. So this is a mobile vending park. This is a specific use criteria. It's a 531 that we're looking to have added to the Land Development Code. So an example here, a real-world example here is provided, this is in actually the city of Gainesville. This is one of the newest outdoor food truck and restaurant parks. So we have, and I'll show a real picture here in a second. So like I said, it's located in the city of Gainesville's Innovation District, has multiple mobile vending units here on the east side or on that right side of the graphic. You'll see four mobile vending units there. They have onsite parking. They've got a focal point there, which is the green space that you'll see on that right side or that, on the right side there of the site plan. And then onsite restroom facilities. And then here's a picture of it. Like I said, you have the focal point. You have multiple mobile vending parks, or mobile vending units, excuse me. And then you've got restroom facilities in the back.
Mr. Chairman, I think it'll be easier if I just ask along the way, right? So if you could go back.
Sure.
So those mobile vending units, doesn't look like they come and go. Looks like they're pretty much, they don't come in at eight and leave at five. They're there for like a couple of years? Because there's no way to get in and out of there.
That's correct. So this would be more of a...
Temporary, permanent, or permanent, temporary?
This would be more of a permanent. It would be up to the owner of that property, how they wanted to switch out. But on this graphic here, which I said, this is not Manatee County, this is the city of Gainesville, they could hook those up, you know, remove the connection to the utilities and then take them offsite. But they would be here. It's a park, so it would be like a mobile home park kind of thing.
All of those are on...
They don't just come in on a Friday and leave Sunday. They're there for...
Well, they could. They're on wheels.
They're on wheels. They could.
There's no way the one on the right, you're going to get through all of those light poles and everything. So are these the kind of things that come and go often, or do they tend to stay there?
So it would be, it'd be more on the site design part of this, but it would be at the discretion of the partial owners. So you could have rotating ones every...
Not our problem. Thank you.
And Chapter 10, last but not least, Transportation Management. So we have parking ratios that would be established for the mobile vending use. And then this request is consistent with the county comprehensive plan and in accordance with the Land Development Code. And the request is for approval of the Land Development Code Text Amendment, LDCT 2312, Ordinance 2398 for mobile vending. I'm here if you have any questions.
So how does this, how has this going to impact, say, Main Street in Lakewood Ranch? Like when they have a First Friday event and they bring in food trucks?
Okay, so I'll go back to the scenarios, which is good. I included that in this PowerPoint.
So is that going to be, with the adoption of this, is that going to cause that to be a non-compliant use?
No, it would actually bring a lot of these items into compliance. So as part of the, I think it's chapter or section 521, it speaks to temporary uses. So it's, essentially, it limits the number. So we would have, this would be, it says a section applies to standalone individual mobile vending units. When you get to three or more, you're in the mobile vending park. The temporary use would apply just to, like you said, if it has, it's a Main Street event or something to that effect. It would just, it would have that temporary nature, but it would not conflict with that.
So it's a use that's being added that, under the current zoning, it would be an allowable use?
Correct. Right now, it's not being, right. And we had vetted this with code enhancement, so that right now we have a lot on 14th Street or 15th Street East down by the airport where they set up, they pull out, they leave, but it's not regulated by the code. So this kind of speaks to that, and we've had requests here for mobile vending parks. So it kind of sheds light on that.
With regard to the parking standard, which, does that apply only to the park, or does it apply...
So it would, so the parking ratio that's there... This speaks to, excuse me, this speaks to mobile vending parks, and it has a ratio there regarding seats. Some people are providing the seating. And then to speak to the accessory or temporary use, the active commercial site would have parking that people could park at and then go to these mobile vending units.
Okay, so the park, of course, would be a destination, but the temporary use is not going to have any additional analysis related to parking?
That is correct. The temporary or the accessory use.
Accessory, okay, all right, all right. Okay, those were just two questions that came to mind.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smack?
Has it been consideration to the agritourism industry, like the Huntsider Farm events and the Mid- Eagle Fair? Would this apply to them at all?
This would not because it's agritourism, so that's a bona fide farm use. This is something separate.
Mr. Rutledge?
So it seems to me, this is a great idea. I like it. It seems to me that arbitrarily, you've set up a bunch of stuff, and no offense, I've worked in Gainesville. I probably wouldn't follow much of their lead, just because they're just, I wouldn't. But my question is, when you say three trucks, what if they had four trucks? So is the discretion to say something's appropriate within the staff's prerogative? Somebody says, hey, I got four trucks, and it says three, are you going to have that prerogative within this code, the way it's written?
So the way that staff had crafted this language, it was based on a lot of different research, a lot of different jurisdictions that we...
You're defending Gainesville?
Hey, go Gators.
Sorry, I'm a Knoll, no comment, but we had looked throughout the state, and there's multiple jurisdictions that we were looking for a magic number. We were looking for something where we could at least have it codified. It would be that, you know, what number do you use? And it seemed like that was the number that we kind of fell on. So some of these, for example, temporary uses, an amenity center, for example, in a apartment complex or something to that effect, you'd have one or two. When you start getting beyond that, then you're going to, you know, the grease interceptors, other uses, the parking, it's more of the scale. So if you had one or two or a one-and-done kind of thing, show up for a couple nights on, you know, for a couple hours, and then you're gone, it's more of the number thing.
My question is, if they say they have four and you say the code's three, does somebody, other than having come back to the board to get that approval?
No, no, it's not. It's three or more. So...
They're arbitrary numbers. You don't know. I'm saying, what if Lakewood Ranch, we used to do First Fridays out there. So when we do them, we might have five trucks. So now that doesn't meet the code, they have to get a special exception. What flexibility do you have when you set out this code? That's my question.
Okay.
None? If this is what it is?
So when you're talking about the temporary use, for example, so I'm looking, hold on, let me just get to that section.
Yeah, you're not on the overhead, so it might need to tell whoever's, there you go.
Just to clarify, for the park, it's three or more, a minimum of three.
Again, when you make an arbitrary number like that, I have no experience in running parks like this. And I just, do they have to come back in to do four? That's my question.
They would not have to, Commissioner.
The question is, you said an arbitrary number. Is that the appropriate number without having to come back to the commission? That's my question.
I think you might view it a different way. If somebody wants to do more than three, then they would do the park if it's...
But they don't have bathrooms and all that. That's what I'm saying. So they go to the street, they want four instead of three.
Well, there's, I think, the temporary nature of the other ones.
All right, never mind. If this is all you can figure out, then...
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't use Gainesville as an example for anything either, since they can't defend anything up there.
And besides, they're from, they're Gators.
Mr. Rico.
You still have the ability to utilize the temporary use permit process. This doesn't take that away.
Right.
So with the example of Main Street, I think if you had the number of, you would put that in your request, in your temporary...
So there is some control within the staff that they can get somebody's reasonable request without having to say, well, the code says you can't do that. Because we don't know what we're doing, no offense. I mean, Gainesville certainly doesn't know what they're doing. So the point is that we want to give some flexibility to what we figure out. You can go back a year from now and say, hey, four's not the right number. Parks don't have to have this many bathrooms and all that. But I just, I don't want to inhibit the opportunity. I think these food trucks are a great thing, and they do a lot of incentive building within the community, so.
Right. And I think as my colleague, Mr. Rico, had alluded to, is that it would fall through the, or it would follow the temporary use permit. So if we needed temporary restroom facilities, those kind of things, because the scale is getting to it. And what I wanted to, it's a little blurry here, but A here, under temporary, it says it applies to standalone individual mobile vending units. So we're not located, we're not fixated on a number here. It was more for the mobile vending park. Just provide that clarity.
Got it. Thanks.
All right, very good. Any additional questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We're not, by doing this, we're not making any existing use that we know non-conforming. Following up on the chair's question about Lakewood Ranch Main Street, we're not making anyone who's doing this now non-conforming that we're aware of.
No, no, sir. We're bringing to light a use that's been in Manatee County. We're just providing standards for it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. DeLezline, did you have a question?
On the park, do you require strapping down trailers or anything for more permanent use and, like, logical wise too?
I'm just, I'm going through it right now and I'm going to, I'll share that real quick with the, with the board.
He went to my mic on.
That's an excellent question, Mr. DeLezline, because in October, when the hurricane comes through, those things are just going to be all over the-
Yeah, I know, like the mobile home parks, they have to leave the trailers on so they can evacuate that park within certain-
Okay, and going through the standards, I know we have the mobile vending pads with the dimensions. I, and I see the demarcations here with that. I don't see a specific requirement regarding the strap down on those. But regarding the mobile vending park, as the Chairman alluded to, is that, are these temporary? Are these something where, you know, every, every week, maybe they have a different, you know, flavor of the week kind of thing, however the, the property owner wants to do it? So, these aren't, food trucks by their nature aren't normally strapped down, so.
I, I would think that it would not be required because they're on wheels. The mobile homes are strapped down after they're taken off the wheels, so.
That's correct.
And they wouldn't be hard connected to anything.
Or detachable at least.
No, I, I think what the intent is to provide connections, just like any RV park where you have a, a utility and power connection. In this case, probably the more important thing is a sanitary sewer connection that's going to be tied to a grease trap, so you don't, yeah. So, but it, I think it's, the intent is a temporary connection that, I think, state statute dictates the requirements once, you know, it's considered permanent. I think it's over 180 days and it has to, you can't have it on wheels.
And subsection, Chairman, if you allow me, subsection, subsection E here, under this proposed 531 criteria, it speaks that at a minimum shall provide a connection to utilities. And then we kind of break that out with A and B.
Okay. I, I like the idea. I think, I think we're taking a stab at it. I just want to be flexible to know that we're going to learn as we go along.
Yeah, I, I agree. I would hate to think we're prohibiting something that's already allowed and I don't, I don't feel like we are, so.
But it's not that it's not allowed, it's just, it's not recognized in the county because it didn't speak to that.
It's a policy, not a rule.
And, Mr. Chair, with any new, I'm sorry, Bill O'Shea with comprehensive planning, with any new use that we establish in the LDC, there's kind of a learning curve. So, we see how it works for a while and then if we come up with issues that we did not contemplate in drafting the language, we come back and we, we tweak it so that it works the way we want it to.
I trust you.
All right, very good. With that, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward, please do so. Okay, seeing no one-
You have no public, sir.
Seeing no one come forward, hey, it's-
The king has no clothes.
Charades at this point. Seeing no one come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion. Any additional discussion or questions from the commission? All right, we'll open, I'm going to close the public hearing, open it up for a motion. We have a motion by Mr. Rutledge, a second by Mr. Bedford. If you would, please vote. All right, with that, a motion passes six zero again with Mr. Roth being absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Go to item number eight, LDCT 23-01, ordinance 23-04, county-initiated land development text amendment subdivisions. Who's reading this one into the record?
And I won't reiterate that, I'll just keep going.
Okay.
PLN 2210-0031, Bill O'Shea for staff, amending the Land Development Code by adding the definitions of certified lots within a shopping center, adding the definition of parent parcel, removing regulatory language from the definition of subdivision, modifying the definitions of subdivision, subdivision major and subdivision minor, and modifying the definition of certified lots in Chapter 2, Section 2. Definitions, adding access by easement in minor subdivisions under limited circumstances in Chapter 3, Section 330.2.2b, and adding standards for certified lots within a shopping center to Chapter 3. Review authority and procedures in Section 330.2, subdivision approval required, and modifying Section 10, Section 1001.1b2, private commercial access to allow access by easement for certified lots within a shopping center, providing for other amendments as may be necessary for internal consistency.
Very good, thank you. Mr. O'Shea, good, good morning still.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners for the record. I'm Bill O'Shea with Development Services.
Yes, Mr. O'Shea, before you start, this is legislative, correct?
Correct.
Okay, no X part time. All right, sorry.
So, just to go over a little bit of history with you before we get into the changes. On, in September of 14, ordinance 1425 was approved by the board that approved certified lot splits and it modified subdivision requirements, allowed a little bit more flexibility. In that amendment, the adoption date of the 1981 LDC was deleted from the definition of parent parcel. That caused a lot of confusion with staff because the way that the certified lot splits were created was you could do two splits under five acres through a certified lot split and then if you did any more than that, you would have to go to a minor or a major subdivision. Staff really did not understand how it worked. The staff person that did the code amendment initially understood it. There was a couple surveyors that understood it, but generally, staff did not understand it. She was going to amend the section before she left for additional clarification, but we got into COVID and here we are many years later and we still have a problem with this section. So, this amendment provides relief from county subdivision requirements in certain instances. It allows even greater flexibility. So, we are going to allow certified lot splits within approved shopping centers instead of doing plats on those out parcels. We're going to allow commercial minor subdivisions, which, under the current regulations, you can only do residential subdivisions. We are going to allow access by easement under certain circumstances in minor subdivisions and certified lot splits. Those are limited to access to a one lot through one lot in either the minor or the certified lot splits. And this amendment provides clarity to staff and allows more flexibility, as I said, to The proposed changes, it adds the definition of certified lots within a subdivision and parent parcel. It modifies the definitions of certified lots, subdivision, subdivision major and subdivision minor. It moves regulatory language from the definition of subdivision into Section 330.2 of the LDC. It allows for access by easement under certain circumstances and it adds those standards for certified lots within a shopping center. And in conclusion, the request can be found to be consistent with the Mandy County Comprehensive Plan and in accordance with the Land Development Code. I, I know that we didn't go into specifics. I do have the language here. If you have any specific questions or would like to look at the language specifically, but we have been working on this for a couple of years. We have vetted it with the development community, with some local surveyors, and everybody seems to be in agreement that this is a good way to go. So, we are recommending, well, actually, we're requesting that you approve this, this item.
Very good. One question. I have seen this, I know the application, one, one of the applications is like if you have a, for lack of a better description, a tired shopping center and you want to sell out parcels and this will help facilitate that process as opposed to having to go through a, an actual plat to do it?
Correct. So, you'll, the, the way that you would use this is you're going to have an approved shopping center that covers the out parcel areas, if you will, but instead of plating them, you would do conveyance of that property through a meets and bounds, a description. You would have agreements in place with the mate, the, the owner of the shopping center for sharing of stormwater, drive aisles, parking spaces and so on. And then you would just be limited, the developer could, in essence, create whatever size lot they want as long as they don't exceed the floor area ratio that was approved by the entire shopping center, for the entire shopping center.
So, there's a couple of questions. So, they can exercise the use of their parking field without having to come do and do a complete plat and make it a separate freestanding unit? So, if they have shared water, access through parking, all that, that, that kind of goes away from being a prohibitive event, huh?
Correct. Now, I'm guessing that most of those stand alone, the shopping center, I would not imagine would develop enough parking for all of those uses on the certified lot splits. They would still have parking within, but they would have positive outfall to the stormwater management system from those sites. And, and again, they would not get access off of the arterial, the collector. They would have to use the access that's provided through the shopping center.
So, so the new standard is everybody's carving up their parking fields because they don't need the parking they said they had for a lot of reasons, deliveries, et cetera. So, so this is a good thing. I also, can you read the definition of a certified lot split as you have it in quotes on your report?
Sure.
So, I can just hear what you think is a certified, please.
So, there's two types of certified lots. One is certified lots for, you know, any, any split under five acre and then there's the ones that are associated with parking lot. Certified lot shall mean any subdivision, so it is considered a subdivision, dividing or splitting of unplatted land from the parent parcel to create no more than two lots under five acres, which are buildable per the current zoning of the proposed parcel and consistent with the LDC and Comprehensive Plan. Certified lots within a shopping center shall mean lots created within an approved site plan for a shopping center through a meets and bounds survey. The survey shall be certified by a professional land surveyor registered in the state of Florida.
When these lots are created, is, and presumably, the presumption is an application for development's going to come in, are, are, for the new certified lot, are they going to be required to provide, like buffers?
The idea is all of those are kind of addressed in the original approval, but yes, they would, they would have to comply with any LDC requirements that are in place at the time.
But generally, for an existing shopping center, you're going to have a buffer around the perimeter and then if you put some use in the center, you know, maybe it's a coffee shop or something where there's traffic going through, that coffee shop in the center is going to have to have buffers?
If they have to have the vehicle use area buffers, but they're not going to have a buffer against a buffer.
Okay, all right. So, it'd be a vehicle use is-
Correct.
Like for separation from pedestrians or traffic. Okay, all right, thank you. Any, any other questions for the-
And then certified split gives you the ability to make whatever REA agreement you have with the shopping center or adjacent lands, so you don't have to get involved in that. That becomes a private thing. Does it have to be filed?
It does. It'll have to come in. They'll have to provide that proof when they come, they're still, even though you're getting the shopping center approved, they're still going to have to apply for a certified lot split in order to create the lot. And during that lot split is when they will demonstrate compliance with all the, the standards that we have put into the code to address those issues.
So, as we go forward, 20 years from now, like we're doing some stuff for Wells Fargo and 20 years from now, all that stuff is in somebody's file they can't read or whatever. We'll have it, it'll be a recorded document, so we'll know what their rights were when they made the certified split, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, good.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bedford.
So, when, when they come back in, is that administrat, is that administrative?
Yeah, certified lots is an administrative approval.
So, you'll look at the things we talked about, setbacks and all that kind of access and whatever.
Well, they're still going to have to file a site plan to, to construct the site, so.
But it's administrative?
Correct.
No public hearing involved?
No.
Okay, and my last, I'm more of a comment than anything off the top of my head is, for instance, DeSoto Square Mall, right? I mean, that, that's what, kind of what we're talking about? How do we reimagine DeSoto Square Mall using this idea?
Perhaps. That would be a large scale proposal, but yes, I think it-
But you could do it where you just-
It could apply.
Splitting them up. It's 56 acres.
I mean, if they have, if it's a big mixed use development, it's obviously you're not going to create a certified lot to do a residential development. I mean, that would, that would be different.
Wouldn't be resident, but another little commercial thing. You want to sell it to a, a pack or whatever.
Yeah, but the mall, I think, is, is got residential components, commercials, so on and so forth, so it wouldn't work for the entire mall site, but it certainly could be used for portions of it.
Yeah, or, and the adjacent properties around the mall where they have five acres there still and they don't want to have to go plating the whole thing, they could just split it off and sell it up.
Correct.
I, I think this is a good recommendation. Thanks.
All right, very good. Anything further? Hearing nothing, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anybody in the audience wishes to come forward? Seeing no one come forward, going to close public comment. Mr. O'Shea, any closing comments?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
All right, going to close the public hearing and open it up for consideration. We have a motion by Ms. Kebba, a second by Mr. DeLezline. If you would, please vote.
You know, there's a point system you get.
All right. Motion passes six zero with the-
Doer number three.
Mr. Roth being absent again. All right, we're going to open it up to item number nine, LDCT 23-11, ordinance 23-91, 93, county-initiated land development text amendment, nonconformities created by government acquisition. Hello, Miss Knapp, how are you?
Morning.
Would you please read it into the record?
Again.
Item number nine, LDCT, so.
Try now.
Sorry about that. LDCT 23-11, ordinance 2393, county-initiated land development code text amendment, nonconformities created by government acquisitions. This is an amendment to the land, Mandy County Land Development Code, providing for purpose and intent, providing for findings. Chapter 1, general provisions, Section 107.2, legally existing nonconformity uses, structures and lots, clarifying the meaning of the term another governmental agency and implementing some grammatical changes. Section 107.5, nonconformity uses, updating the review process related to conditional uses. Section 107.6, nonconformity structures, editing to confirm to the new title to Section 107.8, nonconforming lots, and implementing another governmental agency modifications. And Section 107.9, nonconformities resulting from exercise of power of eminent domain, revising the title of this section and extending protections from nonconforming results from all types of governmental acquisitions, providing for other amendments as may be necessary for internal consistency.
All right, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning again, Chairman, Commissioners. Hi, Charles Andrews with staff. Okay, let me get into the PowerPoint here. So, the background on this is that we have a proposed text amendment that will extend protections from nonconformities resulting from all acquisitions. So, in a nutshell, the text amendment is looking to cover a gift or purchase that a property owner wishes to bestow upon the county or a governmental agency, but then it would allow, and I'll share this here in a section that we have here under 107.9, that would protect them because then they'd be in a nonconforming status. So, like I said, it'll extend protections from nonconformities resulting from all acquisitions. So, it speaks to a gift or a purchase, something to that effect that private property owner gives to a government agency. The changes here are under Chapter 1, specifically under Section 107 for nonconformities. Since we're in 107, we're looking to do some cleanup regarding speaking to outdated review process for the conditional use process, adding the, addressing the other governmental agency. I believe there is just a state agency line in there that just spoke to that agency, so we're providing a general nomenclature for that. We have the other sections here for grammatical cleanup. And like I said, the main section's 107.9. It speaks to nonconformities resulting from exercise of power of eminent domain. resulting from exercise of power of eminent domain. And like I said, this will extend protections from nonconformities resulting from all acquisitions, such as a gift. And in conclusion, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and in accordance with the land development code and requests for approval of LDCT 2311, ordinance 23-93. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Very good. Any questions for staff? Can you maybe give an example of why this is necessary? I'm having a little bit of difficulty.
And, and real quick, I do have a, a member from property management here. If you had any specific questions for them, because they were kind of the, the driver on this a little bit. Bedford.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Charles Metter. I'm the Property Acquisition Division Manager, and I'd be happy to find an example for you. From time to time, we're required to buy like a corner clip or a small little portion of a lot. And the issue we've ran into is if it's zoned A agricultural, it needs to be five acres. So for example, if we need .1 acres and it makes it 4.9 acres, my understanding is not able to build on it because they graciously sold us like a tenth of an acre. And so it really helps with agriculture lots that is, that are zoned A. We need just a small little section. Otherwise, we have to exercise our power of eminent domain.
Okay. Understood. That's, that's a very clear example. All right. Anything further?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bedford.
In your presentation, you used exercise or threat of eminent domain, right? I think.
That is correct here. I'll.
Rework that word threat, because government threat is never like woo.
So Commissioner Bedford, one thing that we're doing in this cleanup is we are actually taking out, I can actually, if you go to the dot cam real quick, I can show you Section 107, for example. And, right here. So the strike through here, we did have or threat of eminent, of exercise of eminent domain. So we are taking those parts out.
Okay. I thought in your presentation, I saw that, that was, language was still in, but that's fine.
No, sir. Strike through.
All right. Anything further for staff? Okay. Very good. Thank you. Again, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to make a comment, please come forward. Seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. Staff closing comments?
No, sir.
All right. We'll close the public hearing. And Chair will consider a motion.
I don't have any on my screen.
Yeah, me neither.
I never get the option to make one. It always says pending.
They're excluding you now. You know that.
All right. There we go.
It's just pending.
Went away. Oh, that's so sad.
Can we do it verbally? That's an old thing we used to do.
Yeah. Let's give them five, four, three.
System is flawed.
Art. There we go. Oops. All right. We have a motion by Ms. Keva, a second by Mr. Smock. Please vote. All right. Motion passes six zero with, again with Mr. Roth being absent. Any additional business for the commission? If not, we're going to go ahead and adjourn. Thank you very much.